We'd like to welcome everyone here, and all those who are out in TV land watching. I've asked Scott, would you come offer us a prayer?
Our Father in Heaven, we are thankful to Thee this evening to be gathered here at the Spanish Fork City Council. We are grateful for this wonderful city and the many individuals, both staff and elected officials, who give so much to this wonderful community. We're thankful for the residents and everything that they do to contribute to our neighborhoods and to the fabric of our wonderful neighborhood, or wonderful community. And pray this evening that our city council and the staff can discuss those items which are pertinent to the city at this time, and that the mayor and city council can have enlightened minds and make the best decisions in the favor of the city. Again, we thank Thee for all the blessings that we have, for the freedoms that we enjoy, and for this wonderful community in which we live and serve. And ask for Thy Spirit this evening in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Let's ask Councilman Margal to lead us in the pledge.
Audience, please rise and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we've got a neat thing we get to do. We had an election and we had some people that were re-elected, and now we get to swear them into office again. So Kent, would you do the honor and take care of these fine people?
Okay, we do have three city council positions that were elected. And if we invite you to come down in the front here, and I'll give you the oath of office, and you can sign your oath of office. Is everybody here that you'd like to be here?
Yeah, Rachel's a scholar.
You'll raise your hand to the square and repeat each line you got after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the state
and the Constitution of the state
and that I will discharge the duties
and that I will discharge the duties
of my office with fidelity
of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
That was awesome. We're looking forward for the next few years with those young... They are young.
You, did it change? You're not thinking I'm gonna make it four years?
No, I didn't. I know I won't, but that's why I'm saying it. All right, that was great. Welcome. All right, we've got a presentation here. Go ahead, Dale.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Here we go, huh? Again. Ryan, you want to come up? So for those in TV land and the audience that don't know who this is, that does not know who this is, this is Ryan Reese. He's our golf course manager and the golf professional at The Oaks. And we're here to... Are you gonna queue me up?
Yeah, sorry.
I don't know how to talk without pictures. All right, here we go.
Dale just said to come. He didn't say what it was for.
Surprise, surprise. Tell you what an obedient employee is. He didn't even ask a question. He said, "I will be there." Like, not, "What are we doing? What do I need to do?" All he did say was, "Should I wear a tie?" I said, "Well, I know you, and if I leave it up to you, you'll wear a tie." So we want to recognize Ryan. He was awarded the PGA Utah Section Senior Player of the Year. And I found out that, and Ryan's not one for hoop law and all the fanfare. And I found out that we missed one because he won one, he won it last year, too. So...
It's your fault, Tyler.
Tyler? You got a little small. So let me just, let me just share with you a little bit. You know that Ryan does an outstanding job managing and operating our golf facility. And we appreciate what he does there. But he also, he also is well-known in the golf circles, and he does, does a good job managing his golf game, too. So let me just explain to you a little bit. I know they have a point system, so they play in the Utah section tournaments, and you get awarded points for how you finish. And Ryan this year scored eighty-five hundred and fifty points. The next closest person was fourteen hundred points behind him.
That sounds like your eighteen hole score.
So Ryan, Ryan had eight top-three finishes and four wins. His four wins included the Rose Park Open, where he scored a sixty-eight; Sand Peak County Open, where he scored a sixty-nine; Black Diamond Open, that's a two-day tournament, and he scored, had a, accumulated a score of one forty-one. And he also won the Senior Section Championship, which is a two-day tournament. He scored a one thirty-eight. With his win in the section championship, then he also qualified for the National Club Championship in Austin, Texas. So we, I, we wanted to be able to recognize Ryan for his accomplishments. You'll notice if you zoomed in on that shirt right there, it says The Oaks. So he represents The Oaks Golf Course, which is, belongs to the city, and therefore he's a representative of ours. And we're, we're proud of his accomplishments, not only as an outstanding golf course manager, but as a golf professional and the way he conducts himself. So we got him, we got him a little something that maybe you can take some time off your golf game and take your wife out or something. I want to recognize, too, obviously, in order for Ryan to leave and do some of the things that he has to do, he's gotta have some outstanding staff behind him. And Tyler, his assistant, is excellent and a consummate professional. And Dalen, the golf course superintendent, just does an outstanding job with the golf course and makes it a great place that people want to visit. So with that, Mayor, I think, I don't, do we need to, do we need to have him pick when he wants to ride the fire truck down Main Street? Or...
Well, this is a big surprise. Thank you. Dale just said, "Be there," and I said, "What's it for?" And he said, "Oh, you'll find out." So I have no idea what this was for. So I appreciate it. It's very nice of you guys to recognize this, and I appreciate all your support. It's a great place to work. I love working here. It frees me up to be able to enjoy other parts of my life, like playing in tournaments. And I couldn't do it without your support, without Tyler and Dale and everybody in the city. So we love Spanish Fork and the golf course and the city, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. Just a little note on that. Ryan, when Dale said, "You gotta come," Ryan said, "Well, my son's playing basketball tonight." And even though he's playing basketball, he still came, and not knowing what he was coming here for. So that shows you...
All the wash ads.
Yeah, there you go. All the wash ads. So we're grateful for great employees that we have here in Spanish Fork, and we love recognizing them, and thank you. Thank you. All right, Public Works, who's gonna do that one?
Okay, this is the coveted Annual Public Works Division of the Year Award. This year it goes to the Engineering Division. Come on up here, guys. So there's seven divisions in Public Works, and every year we take the accomplishments of each division, and we have a committee of five people from administration, and we talk about the accomplishments of each division, and we vote on which division should be Division of the Year. The first year that this was done, the Power and Light Division got the award. Second year, the Water Division. Third year, Streets Division. And then fourth year, the Water Division got it again. And then this year, the Engineering Division gets it for contributions, significant contributions in mapping, mobile service, project development, and land management, traffic engineering, master plans, impact fee studies, and grant acquisitions. And it was interesting, as we went through the accomplishments of this division, I'd never seen a list that big of just really great things that they accomplished in this last year, and it says a lot for them and how hard they each work. I really enjoy working with each one of them and really impressed with them. They all work hard. I'll put any one of these employees against any other employee in another city. They, they are hard-working, staff members that really love the city and represent the city well. So I'll just read off their names, and then if they can get their plaque and shake hands with... Jared Johnson, who's the Engineering Division Manager. Congratulations.
Come around and shake each one of the council members' hands on your way out the door.
Russell Jackson.
Good job, Michael.
Byron Haslam. Mason Spencer.
Do you keep all these guys online? Thank you. I know the feeling.
Travis Warren.
She knows.
Thank you.
Shelley Hendrickson.
Good work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Luis Chardín.
Congratulations and thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good-looking crew you got with you.
And Josie Pack.
Right there?
Good job.
Way to go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Hey, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now they all come back.
Picture.
Picture flags. Yeah, picture flags.
Oh, awesome.
He said, "Perfect." Never heard that. Never heard that when taking a picture.
I just want to have you be on the fire truck tomorrow at noon.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice try. All right, once again, we've got some great employees that work for the city, and we love to recognize them. That's what makes our city such a wonderful city and a good place to live and be with. All right, our next item on our agenda is public comments. Anyone that would love to come up and talk to the council and the mayor? Come on up. Give us your three minutes of fame. That's all you get. You're lucky you get three. I might have cut it down.
I was even letting me stand up. I was gonna announce that I was moving over here.
I would yield my time to you, Craig.
I was gonna announce I was moving over here, but I just built a new house in Springville and bought that plenty. You know, never again. No, we're here tonight on kind of an errand that's hopefully gonna excite you, as it excites us. Y'all know I work at the Daily Herald, and we did, I did manage the weeklies for a number of years, years ago. We've got new management, new owners at the Daily Herald, and they want to start weeklies again. So we have chosen Spanish Fork as our first location to bring back the Spanish Fork Press, and we're gonna call it the Spanish Fork Press.
I'll give you an extra minute.
I thought you might. We have hired an editor. This is Kristy Babbitt. She looks a little like me. She is my little sister.
A lot better-looking.
Yeah, I know. So she will be handling that for us. We just thought this was the right time, the right place, the right community.
Do you mean like a real paper?
Like a real paper. We're gonna be every week. It will come out on Saturdays.
So we can have announcements in there, like we used to do?
Announcements. You can have legal notices, the whole shebang.
Write down now my email.
The Lake Shore News. The Lake Shore News S.
Yeah, SF, SFeditorial@heraldextra.com, which is exactly what it used to be.
You'll get that from Scott.
Yeah, we've already talked to Scott. We sort of told him.
That will come directly to me and will, first issue.
January twenty-fifth will be our first.
Wow, hot off the brush.
Tonight up, we're gonna start with 5,000 homes. We're gonna be home-delivered on Saturday. We've picked kind of more, I don't know what you call it, higher income, or what do you want to call it? But we're kinda, can kinda stay within the Spanish Fork High School boundaries to start, to cover them. And if that works, we'll branch out. We are working on getting some locations to have them rack, but they will be free product, so completely advertising-driven. We're not gonna be asking money for subscriptions. So we will deliver 5,000 a week, and if people want it, they'll let us know, and we'll move to their homes, too. So that's our plan. That's what we're gonna do.
That's the best thing that's ever come out of you for long.
I know, right? And you didn't have to even buy me a meal.
I didn't even have to buy you breakfast for it.
I do miss those.
That's awesome.
So we just wanted, thought this would be the proper place to come and tell you.
Definitely. We're excited for that. Thank you for choosing us.
Yeah, and Kristy is great. She's done this before. It's nothing new to her. She understands us. We both grew up in the newspaper business.
Yeah, as you know, our parents owned this real Herald, and I actually served as an editor, editor of Spanish Fork Press briefly when the Herald had it and helped lay it out and do all that stuff. And I just live in Ableton. I'm like this far from the border, so not too far away.
Literally, across the tracks and about a block.
Getting local news out is very important to me, so.
Great. We're excited for that. Good job. Great.
Thank you guys for your hard work. I know you all know.
Craig, I take back an eighth of what I've said about you.
Let me, let me say something here. This is pretty exciting. I, when I started here, we had the Spanish Fork Press, and then we had, we've had these papers, these weeklies, and they've been fantastic. And ever since we stopped having the coverage that we've had, Spanish Fork just hasn't been in the news, and that's wrong. There are some neat things that happen within the boundaries of our community. We've had two really, really great articles about Spanish Fork in the Daily Herald in the last week or so, but it seems like we were in the Herald and, of course, in those weeklies every day, every week in the case of the weeklies. And that's been sorely missed, because there's some neat stories. So thank you. That's great news, and Kristy's done...
That's the editorial at Herald Extra.
Yeah, she's done some great writing on behalf of other organizations. She's been a writer for the Chamber Magazine. She's doing some stuff right now, and so she's, she's been great. This is exciting. I didn't know. I just said, "Craig, what are you doing here?" Same kind of ribbing that you were giving him, but, you know, as somebody who has communicated with the papers over the years, this has been missed. So I'm excited for that, and thank you. This is, this is wonderful.
We're excited to start again.
Good job. Thank you.
Hopefully, get the support and everything continues to go.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to come up and address the mayor and council? Seeing none, I'll go to council comments, and let's start with Councilman Margal.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I attended an airport board meeting, and it was my first meeting, so I can clearly see I have a lot to learn. I need some good advice from Mike. Excited to be on that board now, and there was some things presented at that meeting to improve our airport, and excited to see some of those things, the Gail Halverson and some of these buildings improved as we head down the road to improve this airport and make it even a more awesome place than it is. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, Councilman Gordon.
Mayor, the only thing I want to report is that there is a vertical wall that is up on the fire station. So the new fire station, if you haven't had a chance to get up on Canyon Road, the building's going vertical. So I have...
Councilman Adam Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had some meetings this last couple of weeks, beginning of 2020. I know it's not slow for anybody. We're off to the races, and it's, it's the case with, with the city stuff as well. Chad mentioned the airport board. Was happy to have him there and introduce him to that board. Again, just thankful for Chris Child and for all the members of that board that are passionate about something that's really neat in Spanish Fork City. The discussion of where it's been, where it's going, and now that it's, you know, in a way branded with, with Spanish Fork, there's just a lot of active participants on the board, and Chad will, will serve great there. I had a few Rotary meetings, had a Rotary Board meeting this morning, and then a business meeting at noon. Discussed a lot of the schedule, the upcoming schedule for the Rotary Club. Exciting things like the golf tournament with the Chamber of Commerce and everything else that's coming up. We're trying to plan for, for 2020 and hit the ground running as well. If you're looking for an organization to volunteer, Rotary is a great one. We've got five new members so far from last year and this year, and it's growing. So it's a great, a great thing to be a part of. The League of Cities and Towns have had a few meetings with them as well. Represented the league and the city up at a conference in Salt Lake yesterday, the Emerging Leaders Conference, which was fun to speak to them and let them know of some of the success going on in Spanish Fork. I did, you know, tell them the joke. Not, it's not a joke, but I took umbrage a few weeks ago when we were, not by the Herald, but by another newspaper. They referred to us as a little city, and I've kind of taken umbrage to that for a little bit now. Said, "We've got a Chili's and a Loews and, you know, two Walmarts and a whole bunch of stuff. How can we be little?" So I mentioned that at that conference as well, and great people, great people to hang out with. The Chamber of Commerce, Heather let me know that she had another event to be at tonight, so she couldn't make it. So I'm just going to quickly read what she sent me to announce about the Chamber that's going on. We do have a board meeting, a retreat tomorrow for the Chamber of Commerce. She asked that I mention on Thursday. I'll just read it. Mentioned we have the Business of the Month on Thursday at noon at the Chamber office for Tony's Window Cleaning and a ribbon cutting for express employment professionals on the sixteenth. And we are running a photo contest for the cover of our magazine, and you can enter on our website. Also, the Chamber Awards Gala is on the twenty-third at 6:30 up at the golf course. She ended with, "We're really happy to have you." Brandon did not do a good job.
You're the one that laughed, Stacy.
Oh, my gosh.
You thought that was funny?
I talked to her earlier in the week. She said you were great.
Thank you.
As for the Chamber.
She's lying.
I'm sure, excited for the Chamber and the service there as well, and the good work they do in the business community here in the city. I'm sure it's gonna be mentioned, but Spanish Fork lost an icon, a big contributor to the Recreation Department and the city as a whole, and just an awesome family inside Spanish Fork, and the services of Jack Swenson were, were second to none, remembering a great man that's done a lot for, for the Recreation Department, for the city as a whole, and his family as well. So it's worth mentioning up here, and I'm sure somebody else will say something about it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Scobbs.
Mayor, just a couple of, a couple of committees to report on. First, the Veterans Council, we met this week. They're, they're happy with the agreement, working with the city and renting out the building, the facilities, maintenance, things like that. They have a few small concerns that I'll be getting with, with the different departments, just things trying to iron out. It's a new relationship, and so they have concerns and as to how things are running and how things should work and timelines. And so we just talked, talked over the fact that it's, it's a new relationship and that things just need to be ironed out and get used to how each, each organization works. it's a new relationship and that things just need to be ironed out and, and get used to how each, each organization works, so. Nothing major, but some things that we'll go over and, and just clean up with that. Also, the Utah Lake Commission, we met, we met back in December last year. The same report going over Fragmities, the algae blooms in the lake. There was one thing that was, that was concerning. There was a representative, and his name escapes me as soon as I opened my mouth, but he had suggested, or, or at least the possibility of suggesting legislation or putting forward legislation to take the Utah Lake Commission and turning it into a state authority. And so they, he brought up, brought up his idea that, that he's, he's throwing that around, thinking about it. Didn't mention if that would be legislation. He would propose this particular session, but asked that, that the cities that are part of that commission put forward a white paper of our concerns. I voiced concerns similar to those that we have with, with similar types of, of legislation and authority that limit the, the city's, the city's roles, and so that white paper we're working on and, and should have that finished and have to the, to the council, so you all have that to, to look at, and, and then we'll be able to, to get that through and submit that. Let's see, you and I had talked about it, and, and so we'll just continue with that. That was, the rest of it was really pretty innocuous, just talking about growth and growth of the lake, cleaning up around the lake, but, but that was bothersome that someone's looking at taking local authority away from, from the city's community, so. I'll keep you all apprised on that. We'll just keep pushing that forward. And then the, the Animal Shelter had a meeting today. Few improvements on the building facilities itself and some expenditures that were approved. Beyond that, they continue to do a great job of taking care of the animals under their charge, as well as unfortunately those that have been lost, and just during the holidays, fireworks and stuff is always is a scary time for, for many of those animals, but that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Beck.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank the residents of Spanish Fork to be able to serve. It was my great privilege to be reelected this year and be sworn in tonight with Brandon Gordon and Chad Argyle, and I know we all really do our very best to serve in our very, I mean, we have a lot of meetings, a lot of time, and I, I just know each one of these guys put in their 110% so I appreciate that opportunity to serve another four years. Next, I would just like to ask Chief Adams, oh, and he just, oh, there he is. Recently, our family had some close experience with first responders. My brother-in-law passed away from a heart attack on the 27th, so two days after Christmas, and when I arrived, the ambulance team had just left with the paramedics. Our victim's advocate was there, Heather Frost. Several police cars. There were policemen with my brother-in-law as he had passed, and they had done 30 minutes of CPR. We had an officer with my mother-in-law. We had officers outside, and I just am in awe of how they treat situations like that. These men and women see people on probably one of the worst days of their lives, and they are all so kind and gracious and gentle, and I just wanna say thank you. And then his services at the cemetery, the American Legion was there, and to see them perform their duties, and it just, it touched all of our family's hearts, so I just wanna say thank you, and, and we have great, great first responders, so please extend our family's appreciation. And I have one more thing. See, I didn't write it down, and now I. Oh, Heather Frost, our victim's advocate, is being featured in Utah Valley Magazine. That hit the stands yesterday, and so you can read a really fantastic article there. And then last night, on a lighter note, we had our Fiesta Days meeting. The committee technically meets monthly, but every January, we invite all of the volunteers, the event chairman, to join us. There's about 30 to 40 of us there that we are just going over the calendar of events. This group right here, they're talking the Pyro Musical. You can mark your calendar for July 17th. They're getting things going there, and then we have the craft fair and the food vendors. This year is going to be a little bit different because Fiesta Days is on a Friday. The, the rodeo will go Monday through Friday, but the carnival is staying through Saturday. So as a committee, we have decided that since the carnival will be there on Saturday, the food vendors and the craft vendors that want to be there will be there on Saturday as well, and we will also have the dance, dancing in the street that night, street dance. So it, it's gonna be a week filled with lots of fun, a little bit different. So we just appreciate all of these volunteers and, and getting things lined up to make Fiesta Days such a great time. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. The only thing I was gonna mention, and I was gonna mention again, with Jack Swenson, dear friend of mine. He was one that started probably setting the standard for our rec department. It was said of him that he made sure our ball fields looked as good as Yankee Stadium. He was a big Yankee fan, and I can attest he did, 'cause for years, we, I coached accelerated baseball with my kids, and all the coaches were wondering why we don't play in Spanish Fork, so when we finally, I convinced Jack to let us play in Spanish Fork, they all said, "How come we haven't been playing here? These are the best fields in the state." And so I said, "Yes, they are." He said, "You guys are lucky. You get to play on these all the time." And so Jack set that standard, and he was a great, great individual, great person, and he will be sorely missed, and I just wanna shout out to his family and let him know that, how much we appreciated Jack and his service in, in this, our city, and being a great human being. Okay, let's move to council comments, or not to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go down to new business. Approve preliminary plat for Ridge Line Parkway Community.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The situation with this item and the next one, both are the same. Recall that we presented a zone change with the preliminary plat in your meeting on December 10th for each of these two projects. However, the language that we had on the agenda at that time was more ambiguous than it should have been, so we think it's important for you, after they've been identified more clearly on the agenda, act on the proposed preliminary plats for both of these two projects. Nothing has changed at all relative to the project's design or any of the recommended conditions of approval. So simply put, on the Ridge Line project, that's item 8A. Staff would recommend that you move to approve the proposed preliminary plat subject to the applicant addressing any red, excuse me, any red line comments. That's condition number two on the staff report, and subject to the applicant meeting any conditions imposed by the Development Review Committee. That's condition number three. And then number four, subject to the applicant entering into a development agreement.
Great. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve preliminary plat for Ridge Line Parkway Community.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilmember Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that approves. Approval of preliminary plat for River Run Townhomes.
Again, no change from what was presented on the 10th of December with this project. Staff recommends that the council move to approve that project subject to the applicant meeting the two conditions that we have listed in the staff report for the River Run Townhomes.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve the preliminary plat for River Run Townhomes.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? San Miguel Valley Corp SF Airport Land Swap MOA. How was that? Did I say it right, too?
Done. That looks good.
I don't even speak English.
San Miguel Valley is a parent company for General Atomics, which has this manufacturing facility right here by the airport. They also own this big piece of land next to taxiway, where, where a future taxiway will be along here on the north side of our runway. And what we would like to do is work with them to trade this land for some land here so they can expand their manufacturing facility. They're a great corporate business here in Spanish Fork, and we really would like to see them stay here and expand. And this is very valuable property to the airport as it develops and possibly attracts more industry that, that would like hangers in their back and access to a taxiway. Here's a taxiway. This is Taxiway Alpha. If you can mirror that in your mind, and this is where Taxiway Bravo will run, and then this land here would be adjacent to Bravo. We actually have a grant from the FAA to start construction on the southernmost part of Taxiway Bravo, and that should start soon, in the next year or so, so we're excited about this. This, we just like you to approve the mayor signing a memorandum of understanding with San Miguel that we'll work together on devising a good way to trade these properties. And there is a task order with Armstrong Engineering to crunch the numbers to do that. Now, that task order is actually, the cost would be paid by San Miguel. They're anxious to do this, this trade, and so we'd ask you to approve that.
Any questions?
As part of the motion to approve it, I'd make a comment that I had a discussion with the Department of Workforce Services last week, and they've been approached by the company of, they're gonna need their services of staffing, the, the growth of this company, and really exciting employees they need, and it's just gonna be a great, great partner for the area, great, great paying jobs.
Really good jobs.
California wages in Utah. And gonna be awesome to have them.
Right.
With that, I'll move that we approve the San Miguel Valley Corporation SF Airport Land Swap Memorandum. I'll just call it the MOA.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that passes. RV parking rate proposal.
Periodically, we take opportunity to review our rates and see where they're at. Normally, we will do this with a, a budget session. But in this case, we felt like we needed to move on this at the beginning of the new year. We have so many people that come in and make reservations for these RV spots at the beginning of the year for summer, and once we get open, and so we felt like, and I sent the staff report out, but we felt like since we were running behind in terms of the market value of what we're renting those for, we're proposing that we raise those from $20 to $25 per night. We have three different facilities that have RV parking, and we like to keep them all consistent. So we're proposing that we raise Canyon View Park, the Gun Club Reservoir area, and the Fairgrounds from $20 to $25. You can see the research we did in there. We include water and power hookups at all of our facilities. Most of those are charging the same amount as we do. Do not include those, and those that do include them are charging substantially more. So I'm happy to entertain any questions. It's really pretty straightforward what our request is, and recommend that you approve that so we can initiate that immediately.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the RV parking rates proposal.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. All right, board appointments. I would like to, on the library board, I would like to appoint Ladonna. How do you pronounce her last name? Chikirpov.
Oh, I don't know.
What do you know? Chikirpov. To beat the li- We'll give you the spelling after. Great. So all in favor of that?
Aye.
Well, let's see. Wait a minute, I propose.
I make a motion to approve the mayor's board appointment.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, also, we've made some different board, board appointments for council members. Let's start here with Mike Mendenhall. I'd like to appoint him to the Chamber of Commerce Board, the Seniors Board, and Personnel Board. Councilman Gordon, I'd like to appoint him to the Mountain Eagle Water Board. Stacy Beck, appoint her to the Risk Management Board, and Councilman Argal, Airport Board.
Need a motion for that?
I do. You guys have to make that motion for me. Motion to approve board appointments. Second. Got a motion by Councilman Argal, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, do your thing.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here, and go into closed session.